Well, good afternoon, good evening. On this seventh day of April 2020. This is the city council work session by Zoom. And so happy that all of our. I think I see all of our counselors here. I see, I'm gonna go according to my screen. Laura Burgis, Councilor Burgis. Counselor Memes. Counselor Salee. I don't see. I see Counselor John Thomas. I'm gonna have you all respond, actually. Make sure that you can hear. So Counselor Burgis.
Yeah, can you hear me, Mayor?
I sure can.
Great.
And then Counselor Memes.
I'm here.
Counselor Salee.
Yeah.
She was here a minute ago.
I see her.
She's here, yeah.
She chatted, says she has no audio.
It happened to me, I have to look out and look in again.
I know she's tried that already. While she's still working on that, I'll continue to go down the list as I see the counselors. Counselor Thomas.
Yes, I'm here. But can you see me?
I cannot see you. I can hear you.
I can't see myself either.
Okay.
I had to turn my video on down the left-hand corner of my screen, John, and that was new for me today.
Oh, okay. There we go.
There you are. Yep, we can see you. Counselor Taylor.
Yes, I'm here, I gotta figure it out now, thanks to Taylor. Yep, I'm ready to go, I'm good to go.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then just Counselor Weiner. Still no audio.
I think I'm up and running now.
Great. All right, so our counselors are here. And welcome to everybody else that is a part of our work session. We're gonna start with our long-awaited climate action commission presentation on recommended related items for the 100-day Climate Action Report. And that's an IP3. We have Matt Krieger that's going to lead this discussion for us, so welcome, Matt. And we can't hear you.
All right, can you see me okay and hear me?
Yes.
All right. I'll probably just put this back on my still image while I'm presenting, but I'm going to share, I'm logging on two different computers here, so I can share my screen, which is the document that was sent by the commission with our recommendations. And I will walk through kind of the highlights of that in case you haven't read it in full detail yet. But, so yeah, let me switch this over now. All right, can you see that okay?
Yes.
So at the front of our recommendations, we had a summary letter just outlining again some of the highlights. I've actually highlighted them here to walk through it. But the process was that the commission took was that each of our working groups, Buildings, Transportation, Waste, Equity Adaptation, and the Outreach working groups all reviewed the actions in the 100-day report specifically related to their areas of the Climate Action Plan. And then they provided the feedback. And we met as a commission to review that in more detail, discuss that, and then put together this final document with all of the comments included. And we'll get to those here in a moment. The, I will say that the Climate Action as a commission, Climate Action Commission as a whole recommends that all the actions be implemented at some point, which we understand to be intent from the city, from the city staff. They have, if you might have noticed, shown them being phased in over a period of time. So some, some actions would happen sooner than others. Generally, the working groups prioritized and provided feedback on the education-based action items. There's a lot of things that can be done in that area, which are, you know, building awareness, educating the public about certain components of the plan. The working groups, especially Buildings, recognize the importance of both incentive-based and regulatory-based approaches. We know that different approaches impact different kinds of stakeholders or people in the community differently. Some are, you know, really need that stick, and others really prefer the carrot. So a good balanced approach is identified within these and is a good approach. It should also be noted that two of the working groups recommended the Adaptation Action Item Equity Review of Neighborhood and Population Outreach be made a higher priority. We'll get to a little bit more in detail down below here on the approach to equity overall. But keep in mind that the Equity and Adaptation Working Group and the Outreach Working Group are both cross-cutting groups. Their focus is not just to look at one specific area of the plan, but to look across all of them and also to think about more broadly the implementation of these and how that might be done. And then, within each of the actions, a robust implementation plan will be needed. This is, if you want to think of the overall Climate Action Plan as a general broad-based framework, our original 35 actions. This 100-day report included these 64 more specific actions, which gets us to the next step. But then each of those actions will require a very rigorous implementation plan associated with that. So we can identify more specific goals, what resources will be required for each of them, and then, you know, who might be impacted by it. And as part of that, it also needs to address equity and what might be the most equitable approach to each of them. The Equity and Adaptation Working Group again noted that the overall report lacks specific actions and implementation timelines regarding equity, focusing more on broader objectives, which is probably fine at this point. But I think, again, as we look at each, as the staff looks at each one of the individual actions, well, that will need to be developed more specifically with each one. So what we did, the commission did, was we kept maintaining the same format that was present, that the 100-day report was presented in, and then just added in, layered in, our feedback. So if you, if you do happen to have a copy of the 100-day report next to you, we're starting on what would be page 10 of that report. And this is what outlined the kind of the timeframe or the phasing of the actions and how they might be implemented. Usually it was based on the amount of effort or, you know, engagement that needed to be required and if things had already been started or not. But we also recommended, the commission is recommending that we actually apply more than just a color coding to this. A more equitable approach would actually be to, to label them, do different methods for identifying things. So in this case, we're just saying add the simple texts, phase one, phase two, phase three to the color coding. So the first section then is Buildings. At the start of each of the sections here, you'll see that there's an overall recommendations from the working group that was associated with that particular section. And then the format follows that within the tables that were originally developed, the commission provided an additional column here, added a column where our specific feedback was included. So rather than trying to sort through a bunch of different documents or presentations that we're giving to you, we're trying to consolidate it here all in one place so that it's easy to read and understand. And then we've also added the phasing again to the color coding. So overall, the Buildings Working Group looked at several of the items that were high priority. They had recommendations for those, a couple of the education actions, a couple of the incentive actions, and a couple of the regulation actions. Most of these are correlating, they relate to each other. We'll get to a couple of these other recommendations here in a moment that were changing priorities for a couple of them. And then, and then a couple of revisions, so we'll dive a little bit deeper here now. Within Buildings Education Action Number One, this is promoting energy efficiency and performance tips to the public. This being a, you know, a big potential impact because Buildings, again, is the largest potential source of greenhouse gas emissions that we can get across the city. And that's split between new buildings and existing buildings, and between residential buildings and commercial buildings. And so it's important that we get everyone on board in the community because we can't just do it with going and talking to specific builders or large owners and developers who are working on the big buildings. We need to focus on our residential and existing stock as well. There is an action later within this overall chart that speaks to outreach and the approach to that, and that is to develop the Climate Ambassadors Program. And one of the things that the Outreach Working Group identified was that that Climate Ambassadors Group could really impact many of these actions. So where that's potentially possible, that is noted within our feedback. And that is something that is, a program that is looking to get started right now, within the next month or so, developing that. The other thing that we noted here is that we should also be coordinating with other, our other community partners like the Iowa City Community School District on this effort, especially now that they have their own Climate Action Plan. We could be working with them on that as well. Developing a website to showcase home energy efficiency success stories, which would be a great educational awareness tool for any awareness. We also want to request that as you move forward in developing this action in more detail, that we get more specific metrics for more specific data, dialed-in data that we can really look at. Right now, the data is really community-wide, looking at the entire community. But if we could start looking at more of a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis, you know, still maintaining privacy and security for everyone, but looking at it in a bit more detail, that's gonna be important going forward. And then providing a reporting tool would be important part of this action for homeowners to effectively understand and measure the energy efficiency changes. You know, if you think about, back to Mid-American when they were providing the kind of relationship of, oh, how well are you doing compared to your neighbors? Am I doing better or worse? This would take that kind of to the next step, make it a bit more effective and understandable and what you're actually doing, how you're actually performing. So Education Action Item Number Two, Partnering with Stakeholders to Promote Green Building and Rehabilitation, was another high-priority action. Again, we need to be able to really affect, impact our existing building stock. And that's, that's going to be a very hard challenge within the community to do. And so this is one of those high-priority items that can really make an impact in that, in that segment. And so. So yeah, so we want to also make sure that we are, again, applying an equity-focused approach to this. Affordable housing should be a consideration. And, you know, just getting a cross-cutting with the different staff who impact different aspects of the community here. But it will take, as part of the overall implementation plan, it will take developing the list of, detailed list of partners that would, that would be helpful in, in working on this. Action Item Number, Education Item Number Three, which is related to coordinating with the local Realtor community to green the MLS, the multiple listing services. We recommend just moving this one from a blue phase two to a green phase one priority. And that's because we're really already started working on this as a, as a working group with the commission, trying to set up some meetings with the local Iowa City Area Association of Realtors. This has been very successful in other communities. One of the reasons we're focusing on it is that it creates a demand for green building. So if you can show and be more transparent about what are the features that are sustainable within, within the listing service, then that creates, that shows people what's out there. It creates a demand for more of it, which then incentivizes people to do more on the rehabilitation side, to create those, incorporate those sustainable aspects. So that's one thing that we think can help drive the market differently than some of the other actions that are in the report. Moving on to Buildings, the incentive-based actions. So Action Number One here, Offering Free Home Energy Assessments Through the Green Iowa AmeriCorps. We saw this as a high-priority action. And I'll get to a few more of the specific recommendations below. Within each of the sections, if there was kind of a more detailed approach that was kind of pulled out of the chart and put down below. So we'll get to that here in a moment. Action Item Number Two was Enhancing Energy Standards for City Rehab Projects. We saw this again as a high-priority action that if we are moving forward with these programs, we need to be able to, to apply rigorous standards to those. So there's some additional detail that was included here in the feedback about the types of things that could be incorporated as part of that more detailed implementation plan. So something that would be, be worth looking at in more detail. Again, there are other communities that have had success stories related to some of these. And so we can, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can copy what's being done in other communities. Again, we're generally supportive of all these other actions that I'm not bringing into detail, more detail here today. But Incentive Option Number Six, which was Developer Partner with Local Stakeholders on a Comprehensive Climate Action Rehabilitation Program. This really relates well to some of the education-based actions. And so we're recommending that are, that are happening sooner. And so to really tailor those and partner those together, we're recommending that that be moved up in priority. And I think the other part of this is that there are things already starting to happen, rehab programs that are happening. And so it's just a matter of scaling those up. Okay. So that Incentive Action Number One, more detailed recommendations down here are included. Again, thinking more about to that next step of developing a more rigorous implementation plan. These are some things that should be thought of as part of that. Making sure that we have a strong education component for residents, especially within the program, not just having the Green Iowa AmeriCorps team come in and do the, do the upgrades or the updates, but having more of an education part of that so that it is operated as well, so that it's, the upgrade is, is effective. We also want to ensure that we have measurement so that we understand the quality of the improvements and not just the quantity. Again, equity needs to be thought of as part of this. What are the groups that are being impacted? Who's benefiting from this? And the Green Iowa AmeriCorps program has been pretty good about that in the past, as has the HACAP program. And then also thinking not just about energy, but all about some of the other, what the other upgrades could do for the health and indoor air quality. And, and just better, you know, as you, as you do weatherization projects or seal homes, what are the things, what is the air quality like then within that home? And so are you, are you creating a negative impact trying to make the residents more energy efficient? So just some things that need to be thought of that might not be at first glance. All right, so then within the Regulation section of Buildings, high-priority action that we saw was to create a more robust energy code inspection program. And that the households are benefiting from the reduced utility bills, something that we need to think of as part of this. And then one of the other things we looked at was that for those projects that are getting TIF support, tax improvement financing, that the, that they don't sunset after a defined period. So that we want to maintain that affordable housing component for a longer period of time. As part of Action Number Two, we saw this Regulation Action Number Two incorporate stricter energy standards into the TIF policies. You know, some of this has already been started when it comes to, as part of the current policy, but this is looking at it in a bit more strict and robust way. And then as part of Item Number Three, incorporating those standards into some of the other incentives. So for an example, the height and density bonuses. We recommend that this action be moved up as it's something that's already being discussed. And it's, and the TIF policies are already in place. So it's something that can easily, that could be applied to some of these other incentive programs. We think that if the, if the city is going to have incentive programs, no matter what they are, rehab programs, it could be, for instance, the rehab for, you know, storefronts downtown. Whatever the, whatever the program is, it should incorporate some kind of energy efficiency requirements and, and be aligned with the Climate Action Plan going forward. Within the City Policy Section under Buildings, under Advocate for Local Control of Energy Codes, one of the things that we looked at as, as a working group here in the commission was suggested revision to this. Having different codes, localized codes could create potential issues, especially in confusion within the building industry. Because the building industry, both builders, designers, they work across jurisdictions. And having a whole lot of different codes, energy codes, could create other potential problems. And so one of our suggested revisions here is that we advocate that the state always adopt the most current energy code and then explore other energy code opportunities as part of incentive programs. And those, there are, those, those do exist out there, including the zero code. So that's something that could be reviewed in more detail and what the application of that could look like. So I think that's what we had as far as highlights that we wanted to go through on the Buildings section. Do we want to maybe as part of this format, just see if there's any questions within each part or wait till the end?
Maybe we'll wait till the end.
Okay.
Unless someone has something.
All right, so within the Transportation section, there wasn't a lot of specific changes recommended to this, either to the timeline or to the actions that were being recommended. Again, just supporting all of the actions and recommending that all of them be done at some point. Within the commission feedback though, and from the working group, a lot of the comments that came up as part of this section were related to making sure that we are engaging a broad-based group of people within our community and that we are taking, again, an equitable approach to that. And so just because within, again, this current framework, these, these charts, there wasn't a lot of detail provided. Again, it's just a, it's a, it's a specific action with a description and a goal. But as that implementation plan is developed in more detail, those are things that need to be looked at more closely. One of the other things that we wanted to highlight here with the transportation incentives, as far as incentivizing the public transit options, is considered a partnership with Iowa City Community School District. There's a lot of bus riders that would be impacted with the, with the program that attend the schools, staff and students. And so that's one that we probably want to reach out to along with the university and have a more engaged approach. And so yes, there weren't really, again, a lot of changes to this section. So overall, it was, it was well put together, well thought of as far as the overall number of, of actions. One of the things that was brought up as part of the, as part of this project, Action Number One, with the completion of the transit study and the implementation of that, we just need to make sure that it's thoughtfully, it's thoughtfully linking planned activities, with, and, and realizing the benefits to underserved and vulnerable communities again. So I believe as part of the study, what we heard from those conducting it was that the, that there was interviews and surveys done specific to where people want to go, want, want to travel. And so making sure that that's incorporated would be an effective approach. Moving on to Waste. So overall, our community is doing very well on the waste approach in general. As part of the Education Action Item One here though, not just engaging the public to compost organic waste through residences, but also through businesses. We do, we do recognize that businesses usually have a, you know, hire a privately hauling company for recycling and composting. But this is more about awareness and engagement. And so we need to think more than just the residences, but also businesses in our community and how they could contribute. And again, the Climate Ambassador Program that I mentioned earlier is the assist with some of these education actions and campaigns. Otherwise, generally, we were supportive of all the actions within the Waste section. This one policy action was recommended that if you move up to the next steps, the things one action instead of a phase two, which is requiring all public, part, public space renters to recycle and use green event practices. This is something that we have good models for already. So it seems like it could be done sooner rather than later. Moving on to Adaptation. So again, the Equity and Adaptation Working Group looked at this section in detail. They did, they did notice that the report, again, lacked specific actions and implementation timelines concerning equity. And that the, the items that are related to equity in the report are few, lack urgency and lack permanence. And so again, this just goes back to, again, this is more of a broad, a broader framework of objectives and ideas as part of the more detailed implementation. Those should be looked at more closely. And it's something that both city staff can look at as part of the development. But as we incorporate some of our community partners, you know, the outreach that's conducted, who's involved in developing those programs, that should be a diverse group of people as well. It shouldn't just be SAP or a commission. It should be a larger group of people that are contributing to the overall development of these actions and not just part of what happens on the backend through implementation. So Adaptation Action Number One was developing the Climate Ambassador Program. I have a bit more detailed information below this chart, that'll get to here in a moment. As part of Education Action Number Four, Concentrated Education Campaign for Private Properties About Native Plantings, Permanent Pavement, Rain Gardens, Soil Health, Rain Burls, and Cisterns. Overall, we think that, that we should consider opportunities for coordinated education efforts with the local agencies as well as coordination of existing and expanded programs that incentivize stormwater as management practices on private property. So again, it's more of just coordinating a lot of the things that are out there that exist and, and looking at additional opportunities within them. Under Education Action Number Five, which was coordinated efforts with local emergency agencies, part of the thing that we're thinking here is that this needs to also include critical infrastructure entities. So this wouldn't just be the government entities, but also entities like the local utilities would probably need to be involved as part of that as well. All right, so with the, I won't go through, and there's quite a bit of information here that was developed by the Outreach Working Group as part of the Climate Ambassadors Program Development. Really thinking in more detail about what that looks like. I think they're farther along on that because they are looking at developing that with the additional staff that were being hired as part of the Climate Action Efforts. And so that'll be kicking off here in the next month or two. But this is, just broadly, this is a group, Ambassador Program is a group of people that would be trained by staff and/or the commission members to go out into the community, attend events. to go out into the community, attend events, be part of our normal community things that are going on, like farmers markets, like, you know, the some of the arts programs, just kind of attending everything that is in the community, but also setting up events and things like the listening posts that council members conduct to try to bring input to the to the action plan and not just not just teaching or creating awareness. It should be kind of a two way conversation that's happening there. We don't want to just push things on onto the community, it needs to come from the community, and that's where we're going to be most effective. So that would be part of the Climate Ambassador's mission or effort. A part of it also needs to look at the equity stakeholder mapping. So again, who are the who are the groups that are benefiting or being impacted by by the efforts, by the actions and and developing outreach targets or looking at who those stakeholders might potentially be that we could do some focused outreach? And then at the bottom of this list is the overall, the number of actions or the specific actions that could be impacted by that Climate Ambassador Program. And these were included in that in that chart above where it was at. One of the other things that the Outreach Working Group looked at more closely was promoting education action number three. Again, this is educating according with local agencies on the health impacts. One of the reasons that we highlighted this was that this is a way to really reach out to people and think about climate action and climate impacts and climate change differently than what they might normally think about it. If if it's impacting your health, then you might that might speak to different types of people differently. And so we really thought that this could create more some effective action, broad based action in the community. And so we started thinking about, you know, what are the agencies that should be included on that? The staff could partner with these and create a kind of a kickoff meeting to really start looking at what are the more specific things we need to be looking at, what resources need to be pulled together to better understand the impact of climate change on on our human health. That research that research exists, so it's a matter of kind of pulling that together and then developing specific actions around it. So we thought this was something that should happen sooner rather than later. And it might involve potentially some of you as if you're interested in being a part of that effort. Okay. And so looking down here a little bit farther, under the adaptations projects, again, these are related back to some of what was mentioned earlier in the adaptation section on coordinating some of the stormwater management programs and and applying those to public and private development, not just residential development. To make them more broad based. And then this was the so project action number four, which is the equity review of neighborhood and population outreach, developing an outreach plan for populations of highly impacted by climate change. This really is critical to all of the actions. And so something that should be moved up to phase one and developed sooner rather than later. I think probably it was set in this timeframe as part of phase two because of the amount of time or effort that would be needed to put it together, but it is something that needs to be done probably right away. Then moving on to sustainable lifestyle, the last section. And so a lot of this is action education action number one, hosting sustainability forums and events. This goes right to what we were talking about with Climate Ambassador Program and what they could be focusing their efforts on. Launching the Green Business Program, Climate Action Network, Education Action. And item number two should be a top priority to promote upgrades in existing commercial buildings. Oftentimes, the incentive programs that are out there are related to new construction. So this is something that would help promote it within the existing commercial building stock in a hard to reach group. The rehab programs could do that as well on both the residential and commercial side. Okay. And as part of that, launching the Green Business Program, we did have some additional recommendations, specific recommendations here about tracking energy use in buildings, about helping businesses do this. And this is something I think city staff are already starting to roll out. It's 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 kind of like a pilot project to help some of the businesses in the community track or understand how much energy they're using, share that information. And eventually, maybe that rolls into a benchmarking program that is in a later phase. But it could easily start with the Energy Star Portfolio Manager as a baseline. This is one area, this program is one area that could that could be a good spot for some future financial incentives. So for bringing for businesses that are looking to make upgrades once they've understood their understood their energy use and how they compare to baseline buildings of their type across the across the U.S., then they could start then identifying what are the upgrades that that might be needed. And so that'll take some money and maybe it's a cost share with those property owners to be able to make those upgrades. They would probably one need, it takes funding to do the assessment as far as what projects they could do and then of course implement those projects. So that's a potential item for future, you know, future incentives and expansion of the rehab programs. All right. And so then I think the rest of these sustainable lifestyle actions were generally supportive of. I don't think there was anything that was too too critical to highlight, but that gives you an overview of what we were looking at as a commission. Certainly willing to take any questions or discussion on any of them.
Well, I'll just start by saying how impressed I am with the rigor that you applied to the climate action plan. I'm very impressed with the thoroughness of your review. I also support this emphasis that you've given on the question of equity, which is something I think we just have to continually be mindful of as we move forward on the plan. And I also appreciated your emphasis on public health, which with this infectious disease epidemic that we are dealing with at the moment, it seems to me that may be something to consider and try to integrate or at least coordinate. Because, you know, many people are speaking about how what lessons can be learned from the coronavirus and how we've responded to it. And I think there may be some opportunities there to consider how infectious diseases and climate action relate to one another.
I've had a chance to talk to a few of the commissioners. Am I echoing?
No.
No, okay. I've had a chance to talk to a few of the commissioners and have been pretty impressed with their involvement with all of this report, which was a lot. One thing I wanted to really mention here is the Outreach Working Group and what is playing for the future, I think is going to be very imperative that we reach a lot of people to really express the the seriousness of the action plan and how their involvement can get us to reach the goals. That's where I'm feeling that the greatest impact is going to be is through that outreach. So I'm happy to know that there was a lot of time and attention put to that. The equity, I'll just echo what John just said, because it's pretty important that we realize what is created now and will even change in the future as to the equity. And so just wanted to make sure that we are aware that at times we may have to make some adjustments to meet some of those equity challenges for people in our community.
Yeah, I would echo the comments of John. Appreciate, I'm sorry, accidentally muted myself there. Appreciate the hard work. The commission went through this, obviously, spent a lot of time analyzing it and appreciate that. One comment that I guess I would have is, given the circumstances we are in and some of the things I've been hearing in the last few days, it sounds like even when we come out of this pandemic, it's not going to be going back to the old normal so much. And I think as the commission looks at some of these outreach plans, there may need to be some adjustments made or or thought of adjustments if we still have issues of interpersonal contact. So I just it's just something to keep in mind because I people don't think we're going back to the old normal once once the social distancing distancing starts letting up. So it's just something to keep in mind.
I had a specific question. Matt, thank you to you and your commission for all of the work. Just one item under the buildings section, there's a public project subsection that I think you just indicated you the commission agreed with kind of what was set forth here. Number one action, which was slated for, and I'm sorry, I don't have a it's page eight in what I'm looking at, yep. So that number one, and if I understand the color coding, that's sort of this year 2020, but continuing into the future. The utility scale solar installation of two megawatts or greater. Did the commission or the working group, the building working group, talk about that much or have feedback on that particular item?
Again, yeah, we were generally supportive of that action because we need to be able to increase the amount of renewable energy. That is part of our grid within our community, which helps reduce our greenhouse gas emissions overall. Obviously, I think that's going to that probably needs to be phased in multiple projects over time. The, you know, one of the things with Mid-America's renewable energy portfolio is that it's mostly made up of wind energy. And sometimes the wind doesn't blow. In fact, it blows more in the winter than it does in the summer. And it pairs well when you combine it with solar power, affordable type projects. Because the energy production for solar energy goes up in the summer, which balances out the wind well. So when you look at an annualized average for renewable energy production, then that helps balance that out. And again, the one project with Mid-American at this point isn't is a small, very small percentage, of course, of their overall portfolio. But it's a start and it and it's would help with the local emissions.
Thank you.
I echo what the others have said. I just wanted to add that I that I really like the focus on existing buildings, especially greening of business and figuring out ways to incentivize improvements to those because buildings overall are an enormous contributor. But thank you for the rigor with which you went through this.
This is Pauline, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I also would echo what everyone said, thank you for all this work, very, very intense. And I would like to echo what Susan said, though, too, that life probably won't go back to normal anytime soon. So I would hope that you wouldn't get too hung up on like specific deadlines because it is going to take take time to get back to normal. We can we can keep our goals in mind, but not have like strict deadlines to get to, just take our time. I did appreciate that. I think it gives us as a city some things to think about, especially when it comes to the code code requirements. Because we often forget we have our lobbyists and we should utilize them for that aspect to encourage them to work at the State House to get those codes changed.
I also disagree with every one, everything that you they said. And I just would like to thank the commission of this like great work, long report that you come up with. And yes, this is a really good job and continue. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Matt, for giving us this report. We really appreciate, again, all of the work that the commissioners have done. We realize that it's no easy task and I I am amazed that you all were able to break up in groups and kind of navigate through it all in the amount of time that you did, because there's a lot of detail in there. So thanks again to all the commissioners. Please share that with them from the council.
I will. It's our pleasure. And yes, it is a it is a long effort, but it's something that we are all certainly passionate and dedicated to, so.
Great. Thank you. All right. If no more questions, then we will move on in our agenda to COVID-19 updates. And of course, we're living in this moment, day by day in our community, where in in our nation, as well as globally, where COVID-19 is a challenge and we're all trying to navigate how to get through it on various levels. Here at the city, I know that Jeff Ruin and all of the city staff has been very involved in trying to figure out things within our things at City Hall, things within our city. Daily at nine AM, the city staff meets, actually at nine thirty AM, city staff meets with a lot of the department heads and it's headed by Chief Greer, where we meet for updates and talk about things that are significant that we need to think about during this time. I know that many of you are aware that Johns County has the ELC that also meets and that meets every day at three PM. And there's a lot of discussions happening there from a Johns County collective providers viewpoint, a lot of people are coming and giving reports such as the hospitals. We do have a social service agency representative there that talks about some of the needs there and some of the things that they're doing within the community. And so that is headed up by Dave, and I'm going to Dave coaches public health, but Dave Wilson is headed up by Dave Wilson. And he really is standing on top of the ball and, you know, getting in those reports. And any needed items, he's prioritizing that. I did want to just talk a little, I know that we're going to talk about this as a council. One thing we might want to consider is potentially a resolution to our governor to request, if people are agreeable to it, I've talked to many of you, to request a shelter in place. We know that the governor has a twelve point system that she's talked about and she hasn't totally given information of how her configurations came about. And so we don't know all of those details, except what we know is within our community and within our state, as of today, we have a thousand and forty eight cases. Today, that rose by a hundred and two cases. We're up to twenty six deaths. And not to be totally gloomy on this topic, because there has been some people that have overcome from COVID-19. But as we're looking at the the cases going to increase in amount, I think there could be some some great purpose for sheltering in place. And so I wanted to put it out there for council to kind of think about if that's something that we wanted to do. I also wanted to give a lot of praise and gratitude to those frontline workers within our community. We'll start at our own city with our fire and our police that are really doing a lot of frontline work. We really appreciate all the things that they're doing. We have other staff that are doing frontline work that is working with people in the community that is at risk or that is at risk or, you know, COVID-19 because of the interactions with the community. And so thanks to all of those individuals that work for the city that are doing those. We, in our community, have the hospital staff and thanks to them, we have people that are in home and community-based services that are providing frontline work. Thanks to them. Our grocery store, we never realized how important they were until this time. So thanks to all of them. And I know that there's a, an enormous amount of other individuals. Our service, social service agencies are doing a fantastic job. There's a lot of needs out there. And they're navigating various things, but they're really doing a great job. So thanks to all of them. I did just want to give maybe the update as to what the cases are within Johnson County. We have 134 cases in Johnson County. Today, there were 16 cases of the 102 that I mentioned. I also, just for a point of reference, since the governor has put us in regions, which we're part of the East Central Region, which Johnson County and Lynn County is a part of that region, but for COVID-19, we're not in the same region. But Lynn County is at 186 cases. So I just wanted to kind of definitely mention what's happening in our community and try to get some feedback from, or try to open up the discussion on COVID-19.
I really, you know, very scared from what's going on today, especially when the update today was 16 extra in Johnson County. And the way that they put us in region and they, they did not include Lynn County with us, even though that we are very close, we, we seem to be like one community because people like commute from, you know, Johnson County, Lynn County all the time for work, for everything. I really believe that there is a reason for the governor to just put those two counties in different region, which is, is not going to make the, the 12-point system coming up soon. But if they combine, of course, we already have that. Because we have a lot of people, you know, and we have 134. We are the highest increase today, which is 16. And after that, I guess it's Scott County, which is 14. This is really, you know, make me very, very concerned. And we really need to do something. If sending a resolution or doing something communicated with the governor will help, I will support that definitely. We need to do something and advocate for the shelter in place as soon as possible. I don't know how much people want them to get this disease in order to shut down. This is really terrified. And I, I now start seeing close people that I know, they get the disease. And I know that this is not the real number. Because two people that I know, and they're very close to me, they are, they have this and they are not being counted because they denied testing. Not like they denied tested because of anything, but because, for example, a mother have it, they don't test. This is, they live here in Johnson County. I know those people, you know. And I know in another county, but we, and as the state, we don't have to talk about that. But just speaking about our own county, I know some people, they not being tested. And they have it. So the, the number that we have in Johnson County is not the real number. And if there is a way we can do something about this. And, and the people who did not been tested, not because you never stop, Iowa does not want to test them, no. Because they have somebody in the house already been tested and they been around them. So they don't need to be tested. They just told them that. They are doing amazing job by communicating to those people every day to ask them how they been doing. But they, they did not been included. We need another column to be added to this. If we know the people who has been tested, that's the, the real number is 134. We need another column for the people who have it, but never been tested. I, I really just very concerned because the people who really gonna suffer from this is a lot of people that they don't have insurance, they cannot be treated, a lot kind of things. If we can do something, please let us do it. Thank you.
This is Pauline. I, I agree with Mazza here. I think the numbers that the governor is working with, her, her metrics are not accurate. And I think that the way that she's been stating this about staying in place, people are not taking it seriously. It, it needs some teeth to it. And I, if we can do something to encourage her to do that, I, I would be in favor of that. I would like to add on to what the mayor listed some of those to thank. I'd, I'd like to comment on those individuals who are continuing to work during this crisis. You're, you're helping to keep our community afloat and safe and healthy. And I'm especially grateful, of course, to the healthcare workers and their support staff as they're right on the front lines in an effort to help to end this crisis. And in all my years of nursing, there were only a handful of cases where we as staff members cautiously cared for a potentially contagious individual. The people folks now are, are doing this on a daily basis. It's hard to really imagine what they're going through. And for that reason, I was particularly disturbed to see some photos that were shared with me this week. One in particular was of a group of people right here in Iowa City, very close to where we live, who's gathering on someone's front yard and their driveway in what appeared to be a party. There was no social distancing. They were all grouped very closely together. And these types of actions needlessly place others at risk. And, and this is really concerning to me. To those of you who are cautiously practicing social distancing, thank you. There's still so much that's unknown about this virus. It, it is very serious and people have to take it more seriously. These are very confusing and uncertain times, but please stay home. But when you need to go out, remember social distancing, wash your hands, take care, stay well, put hearts in your windows and chalk your sidewalks. And together, we can all persevere and get through this. But please be safe.
Yeah, I would agree that further action seems to be needed. We, you know, the numbers, as which as Mazza here was saying, we're just seeing the reported incidents. We do not know how many people are going about Iowa City and elsewhere who may be transmitting the virus. So it's, it seems at this point in time, you know, we've in good faith, tried to keep our controls short of a shelter in place. But it does seem to me at this point in time, at a minimum, a, a regional approach for most of those urbanized areas of eastern Iowa, which are, it's, when I look at the maps now, it almost seems like all the counties are kind of converging. And it would be difficult to, to isolate, say, Washington, Johnson and Lynn Counties. It seems when you, the Quad Cities are only 60 miles away. So there's lots of opportunities for this thing to be transmitted in all sorts of directions. And so it does seem at this point in time where we're really at a critical juncture, a shelter in place would be, along with, I think, greater enforcement, important at this point.
We're, we're constant, from the very beginning, because of the lack of testing, we've been flying blind. And, and having to use the bluntest of tools. And that has been, I think, for many people, the, the great frustration. We don't know, because of the lack of testing, we don't know how broad spread it is in the community. It's one of the reasons that they've asked folks to, to wear masks now. A made one is not pretty, but it worked, but I wear it to grocery stores right now. The, when, when I need to go out for something like that. I think the most effective thing I would hope would be a coalition of cities going in. I know that Cedar Rapids and Cedar Falls and Waterloo are considering similar resolutions. It wouldn't surprise me if Des Moines and Dubuque and maybe the Quad Cities consider them. We, we need, we need to model, we need, we need people if they possibly can to stay home. We need to, we need to wear masks. But social, sorry for the noise. There's, there is nobody here to babysit. There's, there, there are different, there are things we can do. We can talk to people. We can FaceTime with them. We can Zoom with them. We can do what we need to in order to keep in touch. But we should not be having gatherings of any size at all. And I would be supportive, particularly if we can, if we have a coalition of cities that all pass similar resolutions. Because the, as I watched the governor of Virginia decide to do a shelter in place, on one day, he basically said, well, we're already doing the equivalent of that. And then, and then Ralph Northam, who was an MD, the next day came out, realized that actually having an order has more teeth, has more meaning, and came out with one that lasted through the, through the beginning of June. So I, I am supportive.
I'm supportive as well. I agree with what Janice has said. I think it's a lot stronger if we can get a coalition. Whether it's working through, through the Metro Coalition, Iowa League of Cities, to get as many on board as possible with a, a similar or identical resolution, I think that carries a lot more power than just one city. So I think doing it that way would be, would be really helpful. And I will, I'll just add, I had communication with a long time, long time good friend who's a physician on the front lines of this. And they are worried and they're, you know, afraid of running out of the personal protective gear. And one of the comments that was made was even the average symptoms of this are terrible, are just really, really bad for people. And so I think people are not understanding the severity of this. So anything that we can do to encourage and enforce the social distancing to help our frontline workers, I think is really important to do.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And I think, I'm not entirely sure what action we're proposing. I, I think I heard communicating with the governor, asking her to make a clearer order for shelter in place. And I think a coalition of cities and counties providing that message and that strong request makes a lot of sense. I know from just yesterday, the additional closures and the part of the governor's press conference that emphasized law enforcement and the, the guidance that would be given to cities about how to kind of, you know, different law enforcement agencies that could carry out, for example, the no groups of 10 or more. And I was just wondering if staff could maybe weigh in on if we've gotten that guidance, if that seems practical, if we understand what that entails. Because I think that piece of it and the explicitness with which that was communicated for the first time in the press conference yesterday is really important for our residents to understand.
Eleanor may have more up-to-date information than me on that. I don't think we have, at least I'm not aware of any guidance that has come down since yesterday's press conference. I did hear the governor reference that, or actually the Director of Public Safety reference that. But we've, we've had guidance from the initial order on what our police can and, and can do. So Eleanor, do you want to describe the powers in that order that we have?
So it, it's been clear from the start that the, the code allows any peace officer to enforce that order. There was a little bit of messaging that confused us at one point, but that was cleared up. And that happened before the governor's press conference yesterday. I think the police feel the fair number of calls about gatherings of, you know, more than 10. And I, I know we're getting calls from businesses about what they can and can't do. You know, for instance, the example that Pauline used about the party in the, in the driveway, that it would be completely appropriate to call the police and, and ask them to address it. And I think they would do that. You know, their whole goal is to do it with education if they can. But, but there's certainly a tool for addressing that particular circumstance already.
So it sounds like from the counselors, if I was to take a guess, we would be in agreement with a resolution. What are people's thoughts if we did the resolution through the Metro Coalition or the Iowa League of Cities? I know that I heard two say yes.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea to me.
Me too, this Pauline.
Me too.
All right.
Yes.
We will try to navigate that somewhere. All right. So I think Jeff, you'll assist with that.
Sure, I can help with that.
Awesome. Thank you. Anything else for, on COVID-19?
I would just, I would just add to that, the, the city attorneys from the bigger cities that I'm in touch with have at various times had these conversations with their mayors and with their councils. And so we can certainly, I mean, if, if something would come together through the Metro Coalition, we could certainly work on having a, a document that everybody would use, whether that was a resolution or a letter to the governor or whatever.
Yeah. And I, is it fair to say we would be fluid with whatever that looks like, whether it's a letter or a resolution? I'm seeing some not enough hits. Yes. All right. Great. All right. So clarification of agenda items?
Mayor, if I could start, I do want to inform the council that on the parking rebate item, I'm going to ask for an indefinite deferral on that. As we had a little opportunity to dig deeper into our coverage ratio requirements that we have with our Harrison Street deck. We, we have some unanswered questions on whether we'll be able to go forward with a program like that. So basically what that means is when we built the, when we built the Harrison deck, we took out, it's a, it's a lease-to-own arrangement. And so we are paying, paying that lease down until we, until we become owners of it down the road. With that lease agreement, there are some coverage requirements that not, not just, they don't just look at your fund balance, but they actually look at the annual revenue coming in. So if we dip too, down too low on revenue while, while we have plenty of fund balance, so we, we may be risking defaulting on that lease, which would have a ripple effect into our credit ratings and things like that. So we just need a little bit more time to, to process that and to, to make sure that we're not going to have any unintended consequences there. So I'll ask for indefinite deferral on that. And, and I think in a few weeks, we'll have a better idea of what, what is possible, if anything, from a rebate standpoint.
I had a very small question on item 6D, which was the contract for the Scott Napoleon and Fair Meadows Improvement Project approving the bid. And I, I think we were going to be adding the alternates. And in the, the councils, the council action report, it looked like the alternate one and two were both going to be shade structures at Napoleon Park. And I wasn't sure the, if that was in fact the case, or if perhaps one of those shelters was, or shade structures rather, was going to be at one of the other sites.
Yeah, I believe that's accurate. And I see Public Works on the line. They can jump in. But at Napoleon, the, the playground approach for this project was instead of building one central playground, there's going to be a couple of smaller playgrounds throughout the complex. And I think the shade structures are destined for different locations within the park. But Ron and Scott, it looks like you're there. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
I just had, on a different item, is that all? John, did you have anything else on that? I, I had a question in relation to 6B, the resolution for the solid waste containers in downtown alleys. It was more of a clarification whether it might be a typo. On the fifth, whereas down, it says, da, 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 it should be extended to June 30th, 2020 to allow the city with input from the downtown district time to allow current system. Is that also supposed to be June 30th, 2021, as in the final sentence?
Yes, we, we caught that, caught that, Pauline, and it's our next, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the formal agenda? Hearing none, we will move on to FO packet for March 26. Hearing none there. We will move on to FO packet for, for April 2nd.
Just briefly mentioned that the deer manager report is in there. If you haven't had a chance to look at that, we've gone ahead and forwarded that to the state for their review. And then the police department is, is working with Department of Natural Resources on the, on the parameters for a bow hunt, which we'll eventually have to bring to you for, for guidance. So as we put that together individually, if you have some questions, concerns about, about either what we have done or what we're looking to do in the future, please reach out.
One, one comment I would have on the deer item would be if it would be possible to have a map of the, the different zones, which from what I saw, it was, they were descriptions. But if those descriptions could be translated into a map, I think it would be a little bit easier to understand where exactly those zones, what their, what their limits are.
We, we do have a map and I can forward that on to council.
It, it was interesting to see how the, the, the results of the hunt were not evenly distributed across the city. I mean, there are parts of Iowa City where the numbers were not significantly reduced. So it will be challenging and interesting to see how the, you know, the follow-up to this will try to help in those areas which didn't see a significant reduction.
I would also comment, if, if counselors have read it, you will notice that they did indicate that they felt that the feeding of the deer by residents in the community, I think they indicated particularly maybe around Oakland Cemetery, was a problem for them in terms of setting up successful bait sites. And I think when you look at dealing with wildlife and promoting their coming around buildings and, and changing behaviors, they had recommended that we might want to consider an ordinance banning the feeding of deer. And I think that's something that we should have a discussion about.
Well, one thing I didn't see in the report, they talked about how they had sent the number of deer to the meat processing plant. Is that where these deer are then tested then? Didn't mention the testing them for like the wasting, chronic wasting disease. Do you know anything about that, Jeff?
They're all tested by the state. And so the, the deer meat is held by, before it's distributed, it's held until those test results are received back.
Okay, thank you.
And there, there were no, no positive results on the tests.
Good.
I'm assuming our contract was for 500? So they stopped when they got to 500? Is that correct?
No, there wasn't, there wasn't a hard number in the contract. Their, their goal was to hit 25 deer per square mile in, in all the areas of the community. So it was kind of a, a rolling number. And I think it just ended on 500, kind of coincidentally, a nice round number.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Hearing nothing. So council updates on board assignments, commissions and committees. And I think if anyone has any, just chime in. I, there won't be too many.
I have nothing.
I have nothing either.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Everything is canceled, although I was going to try and get in touch at least by email with the EC cog people to ask them about what measures they're taking for the 380 bus that I know is still, that, that is still traveling between here and Cedar Rapids.
The access center group has started doing Zoom meetings. I think their first one was this afternoon and I was not able to participate. So they're getting set up that way.
All right. Well, if there is nothing else for the moment, then we will take a break and come back at 7:00 PM for our formal meeting.